This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 3rd, 2019, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 3rd, 2019, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to speak, please speak into the microphones. And assistive listening devices are available. Austin, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Beryl Mittler.
Here.
Councilwoman Fine.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilwoman Hale.
Here.
Councilwoman Chohan.
Here.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz.
Here.
We're Attorney.
Here.
We're Administrator.
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and conference meetings held March 5th, 2019, as distributed?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have to say that. Okay. We're going to go on to council reports. I'm going to start on my right tonight, and so Councilwoman Kim Chohan, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Over at the community center, there's a lot happening. First, I want to let all of our residents know, the DMV Agency on Wills is coming to the community center July 23rd. So that means you can skip the trip to DMV and come right to their mobile unit. It's going to be at the community center July 23rd, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. They will offer driver license renewals, registrations, placement cards, permits, non-driver identification cards as well, and it's all ADA -- the mobile unit is ADA accessible. The senior prom is next week, June 18th, 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Please come out and spend some time with the seniors. I also wanted to remind everyone that daily over at the center, we do receive the Chinese newspaper that's delivered, and also we have subscriptions with Spanish magazines as well, too. So maybe I can talk to my colleagues about putting some public notices in the Global Chinese Times. And also check out our Facebook page for all the events and events and trips that's going on at the community center. In recreation, our summer camps will begin July 8th. You can register for one week or all six weeks. And also, again, I'm going to announce, we added that early childcare that was requested from the residents, starting at 7:00 a.m. this year. And save the date for fireworks in the park, July 3rd, and the rain date is July 7th. And on Arts Commission, access granted is moving along. We have 12 participants, two photographers, and we're working with Sustainable HP to come up with the arts inventory. And we're also working on the reveal reception for our Band-Aid bench. I know it's been a long time coming. The next meeting for the Arts Commission will be this Thursday, June 13th, 6:00 p.m. here at Borough Hall, right in the conference room. The Historic Commission has also been busy, working on their Mayors of Highland Park blog. And we're going to Edison is actually championing a Raritan Township 150th anniversary. So we're looking to meet with them. Historic Commission is really excited about this. So before we were Highland Park, we were Raritan Township 150 years ago, and it was compiled of Edison, Highland Park, and Matouchin. So they're looking to do some celebration around that. Also, it has -- the Historic Commission voted on moving their meetings from Sunday to the third Thursday of every month at 7:00 p.m. in Borough Hall, starting September. And lastly, last month was Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Thank you to all the residents that attended the panel discussion. The free screening of Crazy Rich Asians was well-attended. We had about 30 people here in council chambers. And I did tell everyone at the end of the movie that I will update my equipment setup. The projector wasn't that, you know, good for the eyes. I normally use it for my PowerPoint presentations. But I'm working on getting a better setup. And happy Pride Month. Love is love. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hale?
Thank you, Mayor. So a couple of things. I wanted to call attention to a couple of things that we'll be discussing or moving on tonight. Through some long and hard work by Terry Hovere and Emma Missy and the Public Information Committee, it looks like we're ready, finally, to move ahead with a new website and blow up the -- I mean, to get rid of the other one. So I think this is a real great opportunity for us to really reevaluate what the website is about and make sure that the website is much more communication-friendly rather than just information provision. So I'm very excited about that process. Also this week, the farmer's market has announced a couple, I think, interesting and great programs. First of all, the Stop &amp; Shop will be providing a donation from all of the holiday boxes that everyone bought earlier this year. On Thursday -- I'm sorry, tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m., they'll be giving a presentation and a check to the Highland Park Food Pantry for all of the money. And if you want to know exactly how much, show up tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. So it's a big reveal. But it's a wonderful program that Stop &amp; Shop has been contributing to the Highland Park Food Pantry for a while. In addition, I wanted to remind everybody that the clients of the food pantry, people who routinely go and use the food pantry during the summer months, the food pantry provides vouchers so that people can use some of their allocation at the farmer's market, which -- so if you are a family of three or less, it's about $20 at the regular vouchers. For a family of three or more, it's about $25 that you can go and bring to the farmer's market. So I think those are also -- those will be distributed at the July, August, and September distributions. So stay tuned for that. Also, on behalf of the Universal Access Committee, wanted to say that the capital ordinance for the installation of an ADA ramp at 212 Raritan Avenue, which is the Main Street Highland Park, is going to be up tonight for passage. This is a long time coming. The goal is to make all of the buildings in Highland Park, all the Borough Buildings, including the Main Street Building, accessible. So that is finally happening. So it will be there where the allocation is being made tonight. So thank you very much for that. And then I just wanted to also let everyone know that Highland Park Gives a Hoot, their summer lunch program, where Highland Park residents with kids pre-K through 12th can take -- can go to the Global Grace Cafe and take part of a free or pay-as-you-wish lunch program that is cosponsored by Highland Park Gives a Hoot. I wanted to especially thank Dr. Taylor for publicizing this among the school kids. This is a great opportunity for kids who need some additional help over the summer and partnering with the Global Grace Cafe, which is over at the Reformed Church. And then lastly, I just wanted to say a big thank you to all of the poll workers during the election season. That's a long day and a hard job, so thank you very much to everybody who did that.
Matt, I had a question. I guess it's for you and Stephanie. Did I hear that the grants from HP Gives a Hoot for summer camp have been extended?
They have. I don't have the specifics because I think they're still working out those details. But if you are interested in a summer camp grant, there's still time to apply for those. So thank you.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. Can I add one more thing? Sorry. I did -- I forgot to mention that Stop &amp; Shop Community Bag Program this month. So if you purchase a reusable bag there for $2.50, $1 will go to Women Aware. Women Aware is a domestic violence safe haven for women that live in Middlesex County. So I just wanted to -- this is Stop &amp; Shop in Highland Park, sorry.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things, please. New Jersey has been at the forefront of developing complete streets policies back in December of 2009. We were one of the first states to develop them, and we've been at the -- we've had some of the most aggressive policies to date amongst the states and municipalities that have adopted such. By 2012, Middlesex County passed a resolution in support of that. And in 2013, Highland Park, we issued our first complete streets policy. The purpose of these policies is to provide safety for pedestrians, bicyclists, and all other users of New Jersey roadways. From our Complete Streets Group, it evolved to our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee. We provided education to our community members through the bike rodeos that we hold annually and through our Walk Your Child to School Days, just as some examples. We've done outreach by having tables at our street fair, our arts in the parks, our Earth Days, and at the farmer's market. We've also had interactive maps and surveys online on our website. In 2006, our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee earned a grant for $216,000. That was a Safe Routes to School grant. We also were able to secure some complementary engineering costs. Those are in addition to the monies, and that pays for things like the specs and some of the design concepts that our engineers would normally do for us, which would cost quite a bit of money. In 2017, Highland Park was accepted into the New Jersey Department of Transportation Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan Program. This is a program, again, sponsored by the state, and they offer free consultation services from a nationwide planning professionals. We were given WSP as our engineers and consultants to work with us. They've been working with us for the past year. And I'm very proud to announce that next Tuesday on June 18th, they will be presenting the draft of their proposal of things that we can do in our town to improve our bicycle and pedestrian safety and to create a bicycle and pedestrian plan, which can then be implemented along with our master plan as you move ahead and do our master plan review throughout this year and some part of next year. Please join us on June 18th, that's next Tuesday, for the presentation. Again, it's a presentation by our professionals, WSP. So please join us for that. It's really important. I'm also extremely delighted to announce that last week, we were awarded a second Safe Routes to School grant for an application that we submitted last year. This time, we're getting $250,000. Again, these are to improve our sidewalks, the ramps on the sidewalks, and general walkways for pedestrians and for bicycle access. I also want to say that I was very honored to join our Pride flag raising last week. I'm so glad that Highland Park continues in this tradition. About seven years ago, we were given a flag by Pandora Scooter, who then later chaired our Arts Commission, and she helped us organize and fly the first rainbow flag here in Highland Park. And each year, we come back and do the same. And also, last -- it was a busy week last week. I joined Karen Cantor from the Middlesex County Brady Campaign to wear orange to bring about awareness for gun violence, which is also very important. And in Councilman George's absence, and I hope you'll talk about this more, we had a -- there was a ceremonial tree planting at the high school. So you'll talk about that more. And I just want to say a couple of things about our Main Street events. As you might know, we have Highland Park After Dark every Thursday evenings. There are discounts for women that go shopping at certain businesses in town. And there is music on the corners every Friday evening in June, July, and August. Our outdoor movie theater began on June 1st with Dragon Slayer. On June 15th, we'll be playing the -- I think it was an Oscar winner, Breaking Away, a wonderful story about townies and gownies, just like Highland Park. And it's true. And thanks to Brian Onkin, who keeps bringing this program back for us. And on June 28th, we'll have our June Fest at the farmer's market. Again, the farmer's market runs from the beginning of May through December. And last week, the mayor had the pleasure of judging the pie contest. I'll let her fill you in more about the Berry Festival and our first pie contest. And lastly, tonight on the agenda is our Main Street budget. And just want to let you know that as we strive to maintain costs, we are going to be increasing the bid by a small percent. It's 6%. Originally was proposed at more than 15%, but through some careful analyses and using some one-time offsets, we're bringing that down to only a 16% increase. I'm sorry, 6% increase, thank you. And the reason I say only 2% is this is the first time in at least the first -- in the last 15 years that we've raised the levy at all, which, you know, are bad. We stopped it back then. There was a recession, I believe, is what I understand, and we never reinstated any kind of increase. As you know, costs go up every year, and we keep bringing more and more programs to the table for all the residents to enjoy. So there's a couple of other things. I know that their costs have stayed relatively stable, and this will be, again, a slight increase. It'll be about $18 a quarter per the average business. So we hope that that'll work out to bring them up to date with what they need for a working budget. And then going forward, we'll do slight increases every year. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilwoman Fine?
No report tonight, Madam Mayor.
Borough Administrator, do you --
[coughs]
Council President?
That's two meetings in a row. You only get one more strike. But I only have a brief report, Mayor. Excuse me, thank you. First of all, big news is I spoke with DPW at my meeting this morning, and that the totes are in for the new route. Those are the big cans that the one-armed machine can pick up. We have discussed the route. I was emailed the map. I didn't get a chance to take a look at it. It's for both the north side and the south side. We're also anticipating that we will have the totes in everyone's hands by July -- by approximately mid-July. They have to be assembled, so DPW crews are assembling them when they can. We'll have them distributed in the first month or so. We're going to evaluate to see whether we can actually add capacity. Right now, the truck that we're using, the one-armed truck, is delivering to the landfill slightly underweight, so we may be able to expand that. The new truck we have is the 31-yard truck. It is gigantic, so we know that we can expand, but we want to make sure that the route will work. Was also asked by a couple of seniors over the last couple of weeks whether they can obtain smaller cans, because they are rather large and seniors might have a difficulty navigating them. We did order smaller cans specifically for that purpose this year. We will have the details. There's a letter going out to everyone on the route about implementing the program, but there'll also be a way to contact to get a smaller can delivered to your house. Just as a note, we applied for electric vehicle charging station grant. They have been -- it's from the Volkswagen Litigation Trust. I learned today that a Round 2 grant, which is for heavy equipment, was awarded to a lot of the seaports and large factories in Newark. But as part of that grant, they also freed up the money for the Round 1 grant, which is for the EV station. So hopefully, we will get news on that very shortly, that funds were freed up for an immediate release. At the Environmental Commission, the Meadows Trail volunteers who are part of that committee indicated that they have the plans ready to expand the Meadows Trail down to the river. That involves the building of a boardwalk for which we have the funds. However, they are looking for volunteers who know which is the hurting end of a hammer to help with work on the trail generally. They're looking for a couple of volunteers to help out on a regular basis. I was there on Sunday morning, really early, working with the crew. They could use another hand. I'd like to wish everyone during Pride Month a successful and happy celebration. I know that in some other states, the same issues are under attack. I'd like to also thank Councilwoman Kim Chohan. I had the pleasure of introducing her at the Pop-Up Asians, and her comment about the film was great, but it actually made it kind of fun. It was like watching home movies, because the camera really was bad. But it was kind of a pop-up event on short notice here in council chambers, and I thought it was very successful. But also, as Councilwoman Wolkowitz mentioned, there was a tree planting for the project at the high school. This was originally planned last year, but we did not receive the grant for it. However, this year, STACK and the Board of Education worked very, very conscientiously on revising the plan. It does involve not just one tree, but an allee of trees, as well as native plantings in the area to improve the -- and provide a shady grove, hopefully, once it grows in at the high school for all of our citizens. And that's all -- oh, one more comment. Councilwoman Wolkowitz, the Breaking Away film is one of my favorites. It's a film about bicycling, so you should enjoy it.
That's right, that's right.
Thank you, Mayor.
One of my favorite movies, too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
I have a couple items, Mayor. First, I'll just reiterate, Councilwoman Wolkowitz's invitation to our June 18th Bike Ped meeting with our consultants who are going to be presenting. There's flyers here. We'll be doing -- you know, you'll see it on Facebook and all that stuff, the usual. It's going to be in this room on June 18th. Following that, we'll take input, any comments, and then there'll be another presentation in July, hopefully, if we can get it on the schedule, at the Planning Board. So those are kind of upcoming bites at the Bike Ped plan that's underway. In the same vein, as if we don't have enough to think about, we also are kicking off that master plan reexamination process that I mentioned at the last meeting. That's been scheduled, and I had hoped to have the flyer done for today, but just competing things happen. But that's been scheduled for Tuesday, June 25th, in this room as well. And it's an open session, and it really is a kickoff, and you'll be seeing Chris Cosenza, who's in the audience from our planning team, there to kind of launch that project, and you'll hear more about that. But just put that on your radar now. And due to the fact that Councilwoman Foster-Dublin isn't here, she's running late today, I did want to report back on something from the Public Safety Committee on behalf of that group. The issue of -- we have issued an RFP for EMS services, emergency services. That was an issue that was a hot one in town a while back, and we are tonight going to have to -- the council tonight has to vote as to whether or not to award that contract to the bidder, which in this case was Robert Wood Johnson Barnabas Health, Mobile Health Unit. It's a long acronym. And so I'm going to read essentially what was the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee in advance of the vote that council will be doing tonight. But to put it as briefly as I can, the Evaluation Committee for the proposal evaluated it and found it -- met the criteria set forth by the bid for a two-year provision of service with an option to renew. The Public Safety Committee met to review the Evaluation Committee's recommendation, but also met with the First Aid Squad. And that's where I'm just going to read, that the Public Safety Committee felt after meeting with the Highland Park First Aid Squad, that they presented credible information that does tend to indicate they have rebuilt their organization and may have pulled together the necessary manpower to resume daytime service with mutual aid support from Robert Wood Johnson. And that, given this information, and the squad stated willingness to work collaboratively with the Borough moving forward, the Safety Committee is not comfortable committing to a two-year contract without further consideration of this matter. So in short, they're recommending that the bid proposal be rejected at this time to pursue this additional information and consider it further. So I just wanted to provide that context on behalf of Councilwoman Foster-Dublin in advance of the vote that will be coming on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So I want to thank Councilwoman Wolkowitz for mentioning the Pride Flag Raising. It was also the 50th anniversary of Stonewall, and I was very pleased to have some of our residents talk about what happened 50 years ago. There was a nice turnout of people to observe the flag raising, and I'm really proud to be able to be cognizant of what happened 50 years ago and led to the gay pride movement. And we had folks from the Pride Center here, and we really do appreciate our relationship with them. Additionally, the Wear Orange to bring attention to gun violence awareness, it started for us here on Tuesday morning, and we all gathered here to take a picture of us wearing orange. But you should know also that a tree in front of Stop &amp; Shop has been decorated with orange ribbons. And Karen Cantor, who is the Chair of Middlesex County's Brady Campaign, has asked that anyone go by the tree and take a selfie and submit the selfies to us so we can publicize them. So the tree is distinct. It's got orange ribbons all over it. I also had the great honor this weekend to give a proclamation to Diane Feldman and her husband, Matt. Diane Feldman, you may recall, she has been an active member of Universal Access Commission here in Highland Park for, I believe, 12 years as Chair and still serving on that committee. Tara Conrevera was with me at the honoring, and it was much deserved. She's done a lot of great things for us here in Highland Park, ensuring that all of our buildings are accessible. And as Councilwoman Hale mentioned before, we are now going to have a ramp at the Main Street Building. That's my report. We can now enter into our public discussion, Part 1. This is a total of 15 minutes. Each person is given three minutes to speak. Does anybody have any public comment? Just state your name and address, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Herb Gross. I live at Adelaide Gardens. This past week, the entire world stopped for This past week, the entire world stopped for a moment to give thanks to the many thousands and thousands of men and women who gave their lives at Normandy. Also, to the men and women who gave their lives in Korea and Vietnam. There is no room today, all of us, everyone in this room, everyone watching television, there is no room for prejudice and this bigotry, which is taking place all over the world. This must be stamped out. There is no room. That is why your sons and daughters, your brothers and sisters, my brothers and sisters, your fathers, your grandfathers, and the many, many senior citizens who are veterans, they fought for this freedom, and we must, we must carry on. I would like everyone in this room to please join me for one moment of silence for the thousands and thousands of men and women who gave their lives to fight for the freedom that you enjoy. As I've said many times before, freedom is not free. You have to fight for it, you have to earn it. Please join me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Thank you.
Any other public discussion?
Hi, I'm Abby. I live on Harper Street. I just wanted clarification. I was trying to follow the discussion about the First Aid Squad and the resolution with that. I just wasn't quite following. Can you explain that again and what the next steps are?
Should I do it? Yeah. And I apologize, I know, Councilwoman Foster-Dublin.
I know.
It's unfortunate that I'm the messenger, but essentially, the, we received one proposal. We actually received two, but the second one came in late, so it had to be rejected. There's a timestamp that has to adhere to. The committee evaluated it, and it met all the criteria that were laid out in the proposal. I think if I could summarize the conversation that I heard, that there was enough, there was a concern, because in the bid proposal, we specified a two-year term of contract. And that, if I could speak on behalf of the committee members, the sense was they were encouraged enough by what they heard the First Aid Squad having rebuilt. You walked in right as I asked a question about it. Councilwoman, I'll finish my thought if she wants to chime in. That it would be premature to commit us to a two-year award, given what we heard at that meeting. That, a couple of things to keep in mind that I mentioned previously, that doesn't mean anything changes right away. We're going to keep, that, this is all subject to due diligence, that we get more substantiation of what they presented, and that council would have to vote on making that happen. And it also wouldn't preclude, and one of the reasons we couldn't just delay the decision further and further, the bid regulations require, once you put it out there, that you have to get back to the respondents within a certain, we'd already asked for one extension, so.
This is an outside bid?
This is an out.
That would have replaced?
This would have basically caught, would put, in this case, it would have been Robert Wood Johnson, who had, was the only responsible, and there's a term of art there, our attorney can remind me of, bidder. And it would have, we have to get, we have a response, a requirement to get back to that bidder in a timely way. They had already granted us an extension because we had various situations where we couldn't meet the deadline. So rather than, to give us the time to basically pursue it. It wouldn't preclude us going back out for a one-year proposal or some other, you know, it doesn't tie our hands in any way, but we had to put this matter to a vote tonight to be in conformance with the bid requirements. And so there's, there was enough new information from the squad that was encouraging enough that it seemed to make sense to make this move tonight, investigate it further, and then it would be then brought back to council with more specifics and to the public as well, to how the squad would be making themselves ready for days, if that is in fact the way that would go.
So just a follow-up question. Is Robert Wood Johnson still answering nights and weekends, or are we going back?
The way it's been right now, the way it is right now is they're on for 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The Highland Park First Aid Squad is 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, Monday through Friday, and then Saturdays and Sundays, they are on call all weekend. So we are not changing that right now. So from a practical standpoint, there's no change being proposed. This really is with response to the bid proposal that we got from Robert Wood Johnson, that at this time, the decision was, or the recommendation, and we'll see how council votes later, when we get to that item on the agenda.
I'm sorry, one more.
And of course, I probably haven't been timing because I've been talking, but I don't know how that does with the time. We are a little over, just know that.
So when do, when do you guys follow up with the First Aid Squad to make sure they're in compliance with the safety issues that have happened in the past? I know you said you already met with them now.
What we decided was we have another meeting in July, and that we are going to ask them to bring more information forward to substantiate that. It may not even be ready to switch in July, but the idea was to at least use that as a target, to try to at least get additional information in, and bring that forward that way.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin, did you want to add anything to that?
I think she did.
No, we had a really good meeting with the squad, and we have come to some agreements on some things. There was a punch list that we had requested, and they came through with just about everything on the punch list that we wanted. To move forward, as Terry said, that we decided that we needed more time to take a look and to treat everyone fairly, so to speak. So we're going to meet with them next month, and there are going to be certain things that we're going to be requiring. Once those requirements are met, then we'll bring it back to council. Public Safety will bring it back to council, and the decision will be made as to remain the same or to change and go forward. So that decision will be made later on. So we will definitely keep you abreast as the decisions are being made.
Okay. Please state your name and address.
Helena Gertman, 127 North Sixth Avenue. Do I have three minutes total for questions and answers, or just for questions?
Three minutes total.
Okay, so I ask that you guys keep your answers short also. So two unrelated questions. One, do you know how many people were hit by cars in the town last year?
Do we know how many people? I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, that were hit by cars in our town last year.
Oh, we don't have the police here tonight.
Okay, so maybe next week when we have that Tuesday night.
These folks looked at all of those statistics.
Well, the WSP does, but as far as the police reports, we don't necessarily get that.
Right.
So I would, I would like, I would like to also, to see that as well. Thank you.
Okay, so maybe you can have that for next Tuesday, because I'll certainly be there with my wife, who was hit by a car in February in town with the walk signal, and when we found out, talking with people, that happens all too often in this town. So we should probably get a handle on that and figure that out. So I'll be asking that, so you can be prepped on Tuesday. The second thing is, I was recently in California at a conference, and I met a woman who was a professor, Professor Edgar, so I went up to her and said, oh, I'm from local area too. She lives in Highland Park also, so I thought we would have a nice conversation. She happened to be African-American. She said she's moving from town because her boyfriend, who's also African-American, refuses to visit her in town because of the racial profile and how many times he's being stopped by our cops. So I want to know what the council is doing to handle that.
Okay. So Elsie, do you want to address that with, or do you want me to?
Okay. Two things. They're both public safety related, so we will be gathering that data. And the, I spoke to the chief today, and as you know, the new chief and new captain, they're busy. They're doing some restructuring and reorganizing, and looking forward to do Highland Park 2020, the 2020 vision for the Police Department, and making the necessary changes that will be needed as we move forward. That being said, they will be compiling a traffic report for the past year, accident report of how many motor vehicle accidents we've had in town, and how do we or they plan to address some of those issues that keep popping up? You know, what enforcements need to be done if it's an enforcement issue? What changes need to be done, what, if the changes need to be made to our traffic laws or our traffic patterns? So they're going to be looking at that. I know that's one of the things that's on their agenda to do. Saying that racial profiling, racial profiling should not be anywhere, especially in our town, but we have to take a closer look at that. We have a responsibility to make sure that all residents feel safe and all residents feel protected here in town. As a black person, I know what that feels like firsthand, so I'm not going to say I don't know what being profiled or, you know, I know what it feels like. I know what it feels like with an African-American son that has dreadlocks. You know, I hit all the bar. I hit every note where that is concerned. So of course, that's always troubling to me, and there's always ways to look at things and to make changes, the necessary changes that we need to have in town to make all our residents feel welcome and safe. We recently hired for the new chief, the acting chief, acting captain. We had a chief out of Newark that we hired, Chief Spool, and she, she's had extensive training and diversity training and different methods of training and awareness. And oftentimes, people are not aware, just by some of the stuff that she's shown to us, we've seen that oftentimes, people are not aware of their behavior and how it's perceived by different ethnic groups. And so a lot of training needs to be done to bring awareness to everyone at that table to let us know that each group that they encounter is treated differently. And should be treated differently because ethnically, there's a different place where everyone is coming from. I'll share a story with, it's, it was funny to me and it wasn't funny at the same time. I have a friend of mine from China, and we're driving in our car, and I, and she's driving, and she says, I said, "You just ran the stop sign." And she goes, "But if I stop, it's going to waste gas." And I was like, "What?" And she goes, "If I stop, it's going to waste gas." And I said, "No, you have to stop." But she said, "But there's no stop sign in China." That's a cultural awareness piece that most people don't know, that there is no stop sign, so if they just keep going. And we, and that's, that was an opportunity for me to do some education and say, "You have to stop. You're going to get a moving violation ticket, you're going to get breaking stop laws ticket, you're going to get all these things, and you must stop at every intersection." As a matter of fact, the next intersection, I said, "You stop here, then you're supposed to roll out, you look again, and then you pull off." But those are educational pieces that people need to know, and then also education for our officers as well. So it's not just one ethnic group, it's many groups and a lot of education that needs to be taught. I know I went a long way, but I'm fully aware, and I want to see changes as how everyone is treated.
Yeah, and if I could just add to what Councilwoman Foster-Dublin stated, Chief Spruill is the chief that actually runs a lot of the de-escalation and sensitivity and inherent bias training for Noble, which is the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives. So the day, the week after the new chief and captain took their positions, they went with four other officers down to a session for training on just those sorts of things. That's the kind of thing that we need to do more of here. Additionally, we hired someone by the name of DeLacy Davis, who has been working with the Police Department in analyzing the stop data that you were referring to. And we're hoping, I think, Matt Hale, do you have an estimated time when he's going to be done?
So one of the things that we discovered is that in order to do the traffic stop data, in order to get those specific things, the Police Department has two different collection systems, and they weren't unable to talk to each other. So the Police Department has invested in a patch system that will allow them to get that data, that will allow DeLacy Davis to do their work. That has happened. The data is starting to come in. Once all the data is complete, DeLacy Davis estimates that it'll be about three months for them to run the data, historical data. And moving forward, there'll be ongoing regular reports about the percentage of traffic stops, percentage of violations, percentage of warnings, all of those types of things. So moving forward, all of that data will be readily available and reported at quarterly meetings that the police chief and the captain have agreed to hold. So there'll be a quarterly meeting at which all of that data will be reported. All that data will be up on all various, on websites and things like that, but the, that data is forthcoming, so.
Thank you. Okay.
In addition to the data being revealed, one of the things that, when the chief and I spoke this afternoon, is that we're looking, we've said this repeatedly, we're in the process of looking at doing our, redoing our website, and we will have pages with information that's not easily accessible now. It's there, but you have to dig so hard. So we'll have pages of information that will be easy accessible, such as the police slaughter, accidents, and what have you. So it's really like bringing us into that 21st century vision to make sure that data is accessible, is available, and people can easily find stuff, so. And then the community forums that will be had with the Police Department. And I spoke to Chief Spool as well, and she may be willing to help us out and provide some awareness training to our residents. So that's something that we're talking about as well, because I can tell you that from someone that sits beyond, back here, and then someone who lives in the community, and it's two different worlds, because oftentimes, we have our residents who are not as sensitive about their neighbors, and they are the ones who are constantly calling about this person and that person. And a lot of the phone calls that are generated and a lot of the speeding through town is done by our own Highland Park people.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to approve amendments to the 2019 municipal budget and water and sewer budget?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any public hearing on this budget? Okay, seeing none. May I have a resolution, a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to adopt the 2019 municipal and water and sewer budget as amended on final reading by title?
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, could you report on advertising the Capitol ordinance for installation of ADA ramp at 212 Raritan Avenue for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Capitol ordinance providing for installation of an ADA-compliant entrance and ramp in and by the borough of Highland Park in the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating $12,000 to pay the cost thereof, has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, an affidavit's publication on file. The ordinance has also been posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Any public hearing on this? Seeing none. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
It's been quite a long time coming. Thank everyone for their work in finally implementing it. Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes, I think this is a great thing for Highland Park, and I'm very happy to see it, and so I obviously vote yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes, it is a long time coming. I believe that the move of Main Street into that building without addressing the ADA access was a mistake, and it's been a long time coming. I know we've volleyed back and forth between what the value is going to be, if we're only going to have it up there for a year or two, but this is a longer-term plan. I believe we're talking about a five-year plan, and it's perfectly reasonable expense and very necessary, and so I vote yes. Thank you.
Clerk, can you report on the introduction of the overlay zoning ordinance for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance of An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park in Middlesex County creating a multifamily residential overlay zone has been introduced in writing by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, before we go to the vote, I'm going to pass discussion over to our attorney, Ed Schmier. Could you fill us in on this, Ed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This ordinance this evening, which the council will consider introducing with a public hearing on July 2nd, not this evening, but on July 2nd, is really the third and the final iteration of what we call the Buckwoods Overlay Ordinance. The ordinance will provide for the ability to construct 75 multifamily units now in one structure. The ordinance is a element of what the borough is presenting to the Superior Court on July 15th as a component of its affordable housing program, which hopefully will be approved and give the borough an approved plan through the year 2025. We have been working since the first and the second iterations of the ordinance were introduced with a court-appointed master and also with the owner of the property. And in particular, we've been working with a young man, and I'll introduce Chris Cosenza, who is our planning consultant from the firm of Looney, Ricks &amp; Kiss. And the challenge has been to try to develop an ordinance, which is, as I indicated earlier, required as a component of our future affordable housing program, but also develop an ordinance that's sensitive to the neighbors on either side and is appropriate for the community. Chris has some illustrations here this evening, and in a moment, I'll turn it over to Chris to go through what the vision is of the ordinance. As I indicated, we've moved away from the two-unit model to a one-unit model with a courtyard in the center. The building is located closest to the terminus of the Sixth Avenue. That would be the entrance to the property. The building has been designed so that there are areas around the side of the building, one of which along Fifth Avenue, which will have a path to the rear. The rear will have 30% of the property undisturbed or open space. That area will also be stabilized so that fire trucks and emergency apparatus can go down that area and fight a fire in the building if that was ever necessary. 30% of the property will have coverage for the building and the other improvements. The building itself is a four-story building, but will appear to be a three-and-a-half-story building because the developer and our ordinance requires that a pipe that runs down the middle of this property will be removed. It's a pipe that conveys stormwater now, and that will allow the developer to drop the building down significantly into that area so that it won't be higher than we had designed the building to be. As I said, the entrance would be from Sixth Avenue. The building design and massing is detailed tremendously in the ordinance. And we worked with the special master and also the owner of the property to reach a consensus about what the building will look like. And we have illustrations of what that would look like. These are not the required development standards. These are the illustrations of how the standards would be applied whenever an application went to our planning board. And a full discussion of all the elements of the ordinance will take place this Thursday night before the planning board, because if the ordinance is introduced this evening, it'll be referred to the planning board for their review and their comment. And as indicated, it would come back to the council on the 2nd of July for a vote. And the other two ordinances would also have been scheduled the same evening. And if this ordinance, the final ordinance, is favorably acted upon by the governing body, the other two ordinances would be defeated. So with that kind of preliminary comment, I'd like to ask Chris if he wouldn't come up. I think he has some illustrations that he'd like to demonstrate to the audience and the residents and describe generally what the massing and the design of the building is required under the new ordinance.
Can you guys hear me? So just by a show of hands, who was at the last, I guess, several meetings who've seen this plan? Saw two buildings? Okay. And I guess I should ask the other way around. Who hasn't seen this? Has there been awareness that there is two buildings providing 75 units? I think there's understanding it's four stories, as the council indicated on the site.
Chris, you have to talk up.
Sure.
Chris, you have to hold the microphone very close.
Okay, I almost kissed it. So this plan that we're looking at has two buildings. And as council has indicated, there was, well, actually, even before we get to that point, we did hear a lot of concerns from the public, when we had a public meeting about the surface area parking in the back, cars turning on lights into neighboring homes. It's also because with the two buildings, we were not able to locate all the required parking underneath the two buildings. So what we looked at was a way to try to resolve that issue as well as shifting some of the buildings away and down into this area, as a result of many comments received, among many other comments. And what we looked at was a single building, which is essentially the same type of treatment. It's still two bars, but now there's two connections in between. That creates a one-story building, obviously a little bit more building footprint, but so instead of 25%, it's 30% as council has indicated. What this creates is a O-shaped building, although it could be H-shaped, it could be U-shaped, but whatever the case may be, it's one building. All of the parking is under the building. So you will not see surface parking behind a building, no lights, no noise going off, just underneath the building is where all the parking will be, except for some drop-off area at the front for guests to see if their friends or family are home. So the point of access is now on the north side through a speed ramp, meaning you would go down into and underneath the building. And what this does is by removing the easement and utilities through the center, so we were able to sink the building lower, as you previously saw. I know there was one comment, one gentleman asked about how do we regulate the height of these buildings? It's still pretty big buildings, four stories. You are right, it is a four-story building, but the intention is to make it look like a three-and-a-half-story building, at least from the outside, when you look into the site. So this section shows, and there's handouts here, so you're going to take it with you, take it home. The idea was to illustrate that two buildings we had previously are actually lower because of the removal of the easement and conveyance pipes, so that they're now be relocated underneath the multi-use trail. And what this, in comparison to what you saw before, if you did see before, is it's six feet lower, which is actually a tremendous improvement. We worked with the owner of the property to see if that was possible. And what that, in comparison to what could be built on the South Seventh Avenue property, mostly ranch homes, they do permit 35-foot buildings, 35-foot tall buildings. That will be taller than what is being permitted to be built here. And the way we're able to do that is we reference a grading plan, which has these contour lines, and we're saying you must set your parking floor at this height. The top of the building cannot exceed this height. And it has a benchmark that is related to something real. So we're able to achieve lowering the building, getting all the parking underneath the building. But from the outside, it is essentially the same along the sides, except for, if I go back to the plan, pushing the building further away from north, northern boundary line a little bit, and maintaining that 200-foot distance we had before, that way you get that 30% coverage. In fact, the ordinance increases open space because now this can count as open space. Reality, this is more like 40%, but we're requiring 35% open space. Impervious coverage is actually being reduced, again, because of these things. So by adding a little bit more floor area, we're able to sink the building, we're able to locate the building as more favorable, at least as a compromise between neighboring neighborhoods, as well as to meet our affordable housing requirements. In terms of the massing, and really, the architecture of the building, as council indicated, that these are two suggested styles. I mean, there's arts and crafts tutor, which are some aspects of styles that we see throughout the neighborhood. These aren't, what is permitted and required to be built does not have to be limited to these two, but what we're suggesting in the ordinance that whatever is built is a architectural style that is compatible, subject to planning board approval, and must have elements of that style. We don't want to mismatch a building of styles, and we want to make sure that the building does not read flat. Because when you look at this plan, I must admit, we don't know what it looks like. So we spent a lot of time on the massing and architecture design provisions, which I think will achieve a look at a building that would be attractive and an asset to the community. And just so you know, this vantage point is standing at South Six and looking into the site, into the ravine. This is what you may see. And then one final board that I'll show is that it would be impossible for me tonight to describe all these elements in the ordinance, but the ordinance does have many, many provisions that were added. If, I'm not sure if you guys have the track changes, I know council does, but there's a couple pages added to deal with the massing of the building. What we don't want is one long facade. It needs to be visually interesting with bays sticking out. That way, there's elements of the building that would appear to be compatible to the residential scale. That's why you have to break it down into 20, 30-foot widths, two-story bays, to create that visual interest, so it's not a long, flat building on all four sides. So I'm not going to go through each one, but there's intention to break massing into different facade types, interesting roof forms, so they don't have huge gable roofs that kind of loom over neighboring property owners. They're clipped, they're shed roofs, which I'll go into more detail on Thursday night. I also have a digital presentation, which I'll sort of go through each one, to describe how we're able to, or attempting to achieve that compatible massing and architectural style that hopefully fits into the community.
It's hard to tell, but what's in the center of the building?
So the center of this building, you're seeing green, if you go back to the plan, is a courtyard. It's basically an inside space where you're surrounded by buildings, where the public doesn't have access to, but it's for the amenity space for the tenants.
Okay, thank you. Are we allowed to have discussion? No, I'm not permitted to have discussion.
I was confused about the picture.
Well, at the end, begin.
Okay, yeah, yeah. When we have public discussion, you can ask that question, okay?
And just to finalize, I know this, if you look at these boards, it's confusing. I'm trying to understand what I'm talking about. I encourage you to take the sheets with you, which I believe are on the website.
They should be.
It should be on the website. If not, take a copy and please come with questions on Thursday night.
Thank you, Chris. Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance? I'm sorry. Okay. Roll call.
Okay. Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, can you report on introduction of the handicap parking ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance amending on-street parking regulations for residences occupied by handicapped persons and amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park specifically on South Second Avenue has been introduced in writing by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, clerk, would you read the Main Street budget, please?
Be resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Highland Park that the following statements of revenues and appropriations shall constitute the Main Street Highland Park budget for the year 2019. Be a further resolve that said budget will be published in the Home News Tribune in the issue of June 14, 2019. The governing body of the Borough of Highland Park does hereby approve the following as the Main Street Highland Park budget for the year 2019. Income: Government Grants $31,500. Special Assessment Bid $166,420. Sponsorships $58,000. Reserves $39,647. Total Income $295,567. Expenses: Administration in General $177,767. Program Expense $117,800. Total Expense $295,567. Notices hereby given that the Main Street Highland Park budget and resolution approved by, will be approved by the governing body of the Borough of Highland Park on June 11, 2019. A hearing on the Main Street Highland Park Business Improvement District budget will be held at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue on July 2, 2019 at 7 o'clock, at which time it places objections to said budget and resolution for the year 2019 may be presented.
All done?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a resolution to introduce the 2019 Main Street Highland Park budget and approve on first reading and scheduled public hearing date? So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
I'd like to thank Councilwoman Welkowitz, the Borough Administrator in Main Street, for coming in with this budget. As you mentioned, they were seeking an increase. It hasn't been increased in at least 15 years, but I appreciate your being fiscally responsible in limiting that increase. I would have liked to have seen a little bit more, as you know, but I believe that you were responsible in doing that. I vote yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes, and kudos to Main Street for bringing in $58,000 in sponsorships. Thank you to the business that always sponsor.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Thank you, Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, for noticing that. They've been really, with all the added programs that they bring in, they continue to add more sponsors. And we'd all like to very much thank all the sponsors in the borough and even nearby, St. Peter's for sponsoring our farmer's market, and all the sponsors at the 5K, and all the various other sponsors as well. And thank you to our Main Street Director, Rebecca Hirsch, and to the board for helping us get to this point and for continuing the growth of our vibrant downtown. Thank you. Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution concerning emergency medical services proposal?
I move that we reject the proposal.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor, can you explain, just, we're voting to reject, so are we say aye or we should say reject? I just want to make sure we're...
So we're voting to reject, so you agree?
Councilman Fine? Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes, motion to reject.
Councilman George?
Yes, to reject.
Councilman Hale?
Yes, to reject.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes, to reject.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes, to reject.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt items number 16 through 32 on, I'm sorry, 32 or 31? 32 on the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Abstain on 23, yes to the rest.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes, and I just want to let everyone know that the resolution to approve the web design is in there, so looking forward to our new website. And as I mentioned before, Recreation Department is excited about that as well. Hopefully, you'll be able to make your payments for programs through our website. Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
And just want to point out that item number 16, resolution to apply for New Jersey Department of Transportation fiscal year 2020 state aid programs, we are going to be applying for a BikeWays grant that's due towards the end of July. And again, this is an NJDOT grant that we're applying for. We are going to use some of the information that has been made available to us by our professional consultants that were appointed to us by the NJDOT to create the bicycle pedestrian plan. So we're looking forward to some success with that one. Thank you. Thank you, yes.
Okay. I am appointing the following for Employee Safety Committee Chief Rick Abrams, and for the Municipal Alliance Officer Brian O'Mara. May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry. Councilman Fine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Yes.
Clerk, can you report on the election of volunteer firefighters?
Received notification from the Highland Park Volunteer Fire Department of the election of Gerald Garcia Rincon and Tim Fong as volunteer firefighters.
May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Yes.
Okay, we're now ready for our second open public discussion. Anybody who has anything they'd like to say, please step up to the microphone.
Shelley Sala, can you hear me?
No.
What? Okay, is that better? Shelley Sala live on North 4th Avenue. In reviewing just what I've seen here, I don't see a topographical map. I think that would be really interesting to understand what happens with elevation and what it looks like with the elevated view. I know that I have a friend who lives on South 5th, and when I looked down into what I would consider almost a canyon, I mean, it's pretty deep, I don't know what that looks like, you know, in viewing this. So, I'm a little concerned. I'm not quite sure how it would look from a home, you know, that would be there. The other question is concerning, and maybe this is part of the plan, which I didn't hear. When we take out a drainage pipe, it's, and with all the changes in the environment and the weather, where, how is that being compensated? That is a natural drainage area.
Chris, you want to address that?
Yeah.
Also, can you talk about the topographic maps?
So, we did have some topographic information, so I suppose at the meeting on the planning board, I could show the existing plan, and I'll probably maybe show another section, because if you look at the section, it's impossible to see from here, but I encourage you to take a sheet with you. We did take a look at the existing grade, which is the dashed line, so we're trying to be cognizant of what's actually out there. So, this is not a make-believe plan, and the developer believes that they can get this to work. We confirmed with them, they can get it down to this level, which is six feet lower than what is before. As to the pipe, the only way this works is by removal, but I wasn't sure, maybe I didn't make it clear, but this will be replaced and relocated underneath the multi-use trail, so that pipe will just be relocated for, into, and go, determines will be the same point at the southern end of the site.
Okay.
I have a question. As regard to, there was a discussion about fill coming in, to fill in certain areas. So, the fill that would be maybe coming in, it would minus the six feet that you're going to go down, so that would the fill go down six feet, or that's a minus on the six-foot fill?
There would probably be additional six feet of cut, but there will be some fill necessary at the back of the building to support the bottom of the podium parking structure. So, there'd be more cut than fill at this site, which I think was what was anticipated.
Explain cut.
The cut is when you remove soil from the site, and in order to get it lowered, which is a response to a lot of the neighbors from two months ago at this point, that has to happen for the cut to make that happen. But that's in addition to any cleanup that's necessary. So, a cut is removes soil from the site and fills when you add it. So, this will be obviously a combination of cut and fill.
But at the same point, it would still come down to the six feet?
It would still come down six feet.
Mrs. Pickard?
Mrs. Pickard, 307 Magnolia Street. I would like to comment that the microphones all across there is loud and clear and distinct. I don't know about this thing, but I couldn't hear when I was sitting there with the thing. Maybe that can be replaced or cleaned or whatever it is.
Can I try, is this louder? Because this is the other wireless mic, so I was just preparing to try this out, so let's try to switch them out.
Is the tone better?
Yeah.
Good. Question number one, on the first section of discussion here about bicycle riding. I'm appalled at the children that are now riding bikes to school because I've got schools in my south side neighborhood. What happened? I know that years ago, I provided helmets, I was involved in it at one time, and it seems to have kind of gotten out of the way. God forbid some child or young adult falls off the bike and gets hurt. I think we need to enforce that and make that available again.
May I? May? I was going to ask.
I can.
Well, do you want to talk first?
Sure.
And go second?
Okay. So, annually, we host a bicycle rodeo for the students, usually at the Bartle School Lot, and we give out helmets there. In fact, it's Robert Wood Johnson. It's the, it's the head trauma unit of Robert Wood Johnson that provides helmets to people if kids show up without helmets. It is a state law that 17 and under must wear a helmet. We do try to, we do try to enforce it and encourage it, and I think our police department also gives out helmets?
Yes, I was going to say that our police department, they have helmets, so if they see a kid riding a bike without a helmet, they'll stop him and they'll give, they'll give out helmets.
All right.
And they used to have a program, Councilwoman Foster Dublin, I don't know if they still do, where they, if they find a child wearing a helmet, they give them a-
Yeah, they give out like a ice cream or pizza, you know, it's like one of those caught being good things and encourage them to do more public safety. So, they still have that program, which they operate.
Okay, good for me to know, thank you. Sidewalk repair. I injured my arm, as you probably all know, thank God it's healing, but I was under the impression that it was the property owner who was responsible. And I now have papers, I didn't bring them with me, but the municipality is responsible for the repair. Mr. Lawyer.
Mrs. Pickard, the abutting property owner is supposed to take care of the sidewalk in front of their house, okay? We get into that five years ago, big time, and we can point out to the property owner that they have a tracked or a cracked sidewalk or something that's elevated, but once we do that, it's a responsibility of the property owner to take care of that problem.
Well, that's what I was always led to believe, but according to those papers, and I'm sorry I didn't bring it along, but it's your documents, look through them. It is the municipal, and the law was changed maybe two or three years ago.
Do you recall any changes?
If you, if you can find that, Mrs. Pickard wants to share, share it with us, we'll be happy to look at it. Right now, we require the abutting property owner.
It's lying on my dining room table, I walked right past it.
Okay.
And last thing, streetlights, they're dimming. At my corner on Thursin and Magnolia, on Pomeritan Avenue and 4th, you walk past the Rite Aid parking lot, no, but, yeah, no, the, yeah, it's the Rite Aid, it certainly, it gets pitch black. The sidewalk is not in the best condition, there's some holes and so on, and every, people don't leave their porch lights on, the power bills are high. I don't know why, but.
Borough Administrator, can you have somebody check out, since the police are not here?
Absolutely. You said it was basically on 4th between Magnolia and Raritan?
Because that's where I live.
That's kind of your, I know your stomping grounds pretty well now. The other thing I just wanted others to be aware of, and I'm not saying you can do this every time, but when we, when we do take reports of streetlights that are out or malfunctioning, and what I've started doing is, if you have a phone with you, take a picture of the pole number, because that's what we need when we report it. We can go out and send the officer or another member of staff to look at it, but if you're there and you have the opportunity to take down the pole number, in addition, when you report that to us, it just makes the process go that much more quickly, because we have to get a location and a pole number to PSENG so that they come out and deal with the problem. But we'll, I'll go, I'll ask someone to go take a look at that, and we'll, we'll get that in the queue.
Okay, I'll do that. I don't have a smartphone. I don't have a computer.
Thank you.
Hello, Kalidra Hatazi, South Second Avenue. Pardon my voice, I'm just getting over a cold. I have some questions about the future fair housing obligation, because I'm not clear on that. I recently read the borough's third round housing element and fair share plan and went through it pretty thoroughly. So, just so I'm clear, the boroughs satisfied their third round fair share obligation?
I'm going to ask the Borough Attorney to address that.
We'll find that out on July 15, because that's when the final hearing on the plan will take place before Judge McCluskey.
So, has a future affordable housing obligation been assigned to Highland Park?
No, we're still working on the 2015 to 2025 cycle. So, if the program is approved by the court on July the 15, then we will have the program in place up until 2025. And then, of course, we anticipate another 10-year cycle.
So, every 10 years, Highland Park is expected to produce more affordable housing, is that correct?
Not necessarily. It depends upon the demographics and what the region requires. Now, I must say, I think because we're a growing state, it probably will go up, there will be an additional requirement, but it really depends on what the region requires and what our share of it is.
So, in the document, it mentioned that the Buckwoods property was not part of that third round obligation, that the Buckwoods residents, that 75 units, would go towards a future obligation, a future obligation that we don't even know what it is. Is that correct?
That's correct. The ordinance says that in the introduction, a potential future obligation, and then those, the affordable units would go towards that, yes.
Okay. So, also, that I, something I found very curious in this document was the number of affordable housing units that were produced by new developments. As I've been involved with this process, I've repeatedly heard the borough say that all new construction would receive 15 or 20% set-asides for everything that they build, but what I've been seeing in this document is that there are a number of developments that have sued the borough for borough builder remedy lawsuits, yet they're only, they were only obligated to give some as little as 5%. Why is that?
Well, that occurred about five years ago on two developments, which one had been constructed and American Properties has another one to be constructed. And it was, those were builder remedy lawsuits, because we did not have an approved protected plan. So, we had to settle the case, and as a part of that settlement, not only did the number of units they wanted to build come down dramatically, but the number of affordable units was not required in the 15 to 20% range. And that was presented to the court on two occasions, because the settlements had to be approved, and the court approved those. Now, we're moving into the second half of this round, and now, for example, the Kaplan Development has a 20% obligation, et cetera, et cetera. And these, this property would have a 15 or 20% obligation. So, going forward, the 15 or 20%, as an approved plan, will have to be adhered to.
If I could just, I just want to add to that. The lawsuits that the attorney was referring to go back to 2008, when the borough did not file their plans. I don't think there was, you know, none of us were here at the time, so I don't know exactly what happened, but as a result of that, the, any, we got thrown into a whole group of municipalities that did not have adequate plans, and that allowed for developers to sue the municipality under a builder's remedy, and the courts intervened, and they basically gave the developers those kind of breaks. That's no longer something, once, once July 14?
15.
Once July 15 passes, we, we will be out of that mess from 2008.
Well, then, how does that explain why Highland Cliffs, that built 23 units, only has two affordable units, and they were issued a 10% set-aside, and they didn't fulfill even the 10%? They built two units, and then they paid the borough for the .3 that they didn't build, and they didn't have a builder's remedy lawsuit?
Well, honestly, I'm not familiar with that, that, when was that approval? Does your research show that?
It does. Sorry, it's here in the, this is the borough's document that was adopted and endorsed in October of 2018. So, basically, Highland Cliffs didn't have that same 20% stipulation, and they didn't sue the borough, they weren't part of a builder's remedy. It just, I bring this up to say, it just seems like the affordable housing set-asides seem to be arbitrary, and they're being arbitrarily applied.
Can I take this?
Yeah, please. Because Highland-
I want to, so, I'm not sure about the Highland Cliffs. I thought there were three, and that was not-
There are not. There are not. I'm a real estate agent.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll check that, too.
And I checked it, I, she looked at it for clients, they only have two.
What the mayor was saying is very important, that we were, we were sued back then on those developments. It's, it's an incredibly cynical process that's happened here in the state of New Jersey. The whole point of the Mount Laurel Agreement is to, is to create affordable housing in the state where affordable housing is not being built. And what developers have done, and they have, they do this throughout municipalities, they take advantage of municipalities throughout the state, and they come and they say, I'm suing, you know, I've noticed that this borough has not met their obligations, so we're going to latch on to your lawsuit, and we're going to build a ridiculous amount of high-density units, and therefore, we're going to be able to fulfill your gap of X number of affordable units. Well, the density is usually so tremendous and unbearable that the courts allow a negotiation downward, but when that, when the unit number goes down, so do the affordable units. So, the whole thing is a very cynical process, because-
I totally understand.
Okay.
And I completely understand that builders use this as a way of shoehorning in construction in municipalities that might even-
Right, but the arbit, but the arbitrary number that you're referring to is, is the reason that those developments that have tried to sue us, the reason their, the low-income housing number was brought down is because the courts granted them the lower density, and therefore, to match that percentage, they lowered the low-income obligation. We will look into Highland Cliffs.
I totally understand that, but, I mean, it's not just those two buildings. Polte has 82 units, only nine of them are affordable, that's only 10%. As I said, Highland Cliffs, they have only 10%, or they have less than 10%, because they only have two out of 23. Again, the reason I bring this up is because Highland Park has fulfilled a great deal of its affordable housing obligation through a lot of work with the Reform Church of Highland Park and a lot of the affordable units that they've built, other things that Highland Park has done in terms of renovating the senior building and planned renovations for the park terrace public housing. But the Buckwoods property, the population density there of 75 units, I understand that that is court-ordered for up to 75, but I don't understand why your overlay has to be so specific in terms of deciding what gets built there. You have a property that you're proposing at 31 River Road on the corner of River Road and Walter Street, that has a planned 20% or 15% set-aside, which is great, but you've given leeway to that development to be any mix of units. You've not been that specific, and I don't understand, and a lot of other people don't understand, why this ordinance overlay has to be so rigid, that it can't allow for the builder to build lower and wider- builder to build lower and wider out, and this green space that everyone keeps talking about preserving, it's not really green space, it's like two hundred feet, and I'm quite sure many people would rather have that property built all the way out than have the height that we have that's imposing on people's backyards.
Well, the, the Pulte example you used was one of the first builder remedy lawsuits going back to two thousand and eight. They built the property, another owner sued us, and then flipped the property to Pulte, so that's where they came up with the ten percent. And the, the number in the fairness agreement we have with the Fair Share Housing Center does not say up to seventy-five percent, it says seventy-five percent, seventy-five units. It doesn't say up to seventy-five, it says seventy-five, it probably says at least seventy-five, but it says seventy-five units. We didn't have the ability to, uh, do less than that under our settlement agreement with the Fair Share Housing Center, and we took that to a fairness hearing about four or five months ago. There was a public hearing on that agreement, and that agreement was approved by the court. So, we're simply following the process that is laid out for us by the courts, because there is no administrative agency like COO to work with any longer, we have to go through the courts. And we felt that working out the number at seventy-five was an advantageous number for the town, because the last demand we had from that developer was for a hundred and forty-four units on that property, and they were threatening to sue us over that, and we went in to get the settlement worked out, and with the judge and the mediator, that number came down to seventy-five. But that number is reflected in our agreement with the Fair Share Housing Center. They approved that number, the court approved that number, and that's why we're using that number of seventy-five units.
Do you have to come to these settlement agreements without having done any, like, social impact or traffic impact studies?
Well, the, the traffic impact study, all the developments will occur before the planning board, so, on, on Thursday night, Chris is going to go through the details of the ordinance with the planning board. If they endorse it, and the council eventually adopts the ordinance on the second of July, then an actual plan will be prepared, and then all of those issues, environmental, traffic, fire protection, you know, the list of items that go into a site plan, will be vetted and discussed at length by the planning board. That's where the discussion takes place.
And so, if, in that discussion, or if you do, for example, a social impact study that looks at how many schoolchildren are going to be, uh, as, how many families are moving into this, how many schoolchildren are going to now be in the Highland Park school system? If there are negative impacts on any level, does that have any effect on the population density and the density of units that you're putting into the space?
Probably not. In other words, we, we don't zone against schoolchildren in this community or any other community.
Right.
It's against the law. Um, we would find room for them in the school system. As part of our discussions with this developer over the last five or six years, we have inquired of the school system as to whether or not they could absorb the kids that could go into this development. They told us they can. Um, so you, you can't, you can't say, "Well, because we're going to get, you know, fifteen, twenty, thirty additional kids in this development, you can't approve the development at seventy-five." That's not permitted under zoning law in New Jersey, we couldn't do that.
No, I'm not asking that. I'm asking if you had that information, and you just said that you do.
On the school kids, we have it, yes.
Okay.
We, we studied, and we asked the question, they gave us the answer, yes.
And is there any chance that this ordinance would change at all between now and July second?
Sure. If the planning board on Thursday night made certain recommendations for change, then those changes could be considered by the council. If those were changes that were not substantive, in other words, they didn't go to the heart of the ordinance, we could make those changes before it was acted upon on July second. If they were substantive changes, meaning significant changes, we'd have to reintroduce the ordinance, have another public hearing, but it could change.
So, last thing I'd like to add is, um, part of the reason that the Mount Laurel doctrine was enacted was not just to create affordable housing, it was a remedy against, uh, segregational zoning, and people being, uh, sort of boxed out of moving into areas because of zoning segregation. So, it was not just this thing to create affordable housing, it was to remedy a very discriminatory racist policy that was not just in New Jersey.
Redlining.
Redlining, but that was nationwide. So, just, you know, I don't want to leave this as just simply, this is just some, you know, altruistic effort to create affordable housing, because that's not what the Mount Laurel doctrine was necessarily made for.
Elena Gersmay, live on one twenty-seven North Sixth, but also in property on South Seventh. Um, on the follow-up of the previous question, is it possible to get the answer about Highland Cliffs on Thursday, by Thursday, at the planning board meeting?
Yeah, that's.
So, we understand that?
That Highland Cliffs thing just doesn't.
Can I?
Well, we, we could certainly talk to the, uh, Secretary of Planning Board, take a look at the resolution, and then I guess if somebody says they didn't build three, but they only built two, we could send somebody out to check that. I doubt it would be done by Thursday, though.
Can I, can I just?
Go ahead.
I have one thought, and I, it'd have to be subject to checking, and maybe even our, our planner might know the answer. Um, my remembrance, and this is going back a ways, that the approvals for Highland Cliff go back a number of years, and it may predate our requirement to have fifteen to twenty percent, depending on rental versus, and that, that could be part of the explanation why it has been inconsistent to the point that was previously made, and part of what's being required as part of the housing plan that was referenced was the fifteen to twenty percent moving forward. That plan is from two thousand and eighteen. This is all stuff we've been putting into place as part of the compliance hearing, if I'm not mistaken, Borough Attorney. So, part of, some of that is because we didn't have that firm policy in place, that's my, my guess, I don't know, but I, I am aware of that project, the approvals go back a number of years.
So, I'm just asking for the answer to be gotten by the council.
But that's, I think the answer is what, what, what's in the plan, what she said is correct, that's what the approval was. I think if that application was before the planning board with the new plan in place, the new requirements in place, the result might have been different, and, and that, but that was the time and place in which the approval was given.
Highland, it, it, it is two. It is two. If you go on Piase and Associates, it's two. I have the flyer. It's two.
The question is why? So, I know you don't have an answer between now and five minutes ago, so I just ask you to get the answer.
We'll find out.
Yep, so, that's fair. Um, I have two other points about Buckwoods. Um, one is, I am not a firefighter, I've never been a firefighter, nor have I played one on TV. This does not look like a safe structure to get fire trucks there. I understand what you said about having, um, the ground secured on the south side, but I don't see how, without having roads around it, that that's going to protect the residents in those buildings and the residents both on Seventh and Fifth, so I ask for, you know, you, you said you'll do an analysis. Uh, the main question is, how did the planning team come up with thirty feet on one side and fifty feet on the other side?
Usually when we do an analysis of structures of this size and, um, in consideration of neighboring property owners, what we try to do is sort of a, you know, height setback ratio, so when we get to different heights, we try to encourage a deeper setback than what is permitted under the line zone. For, for example, in the RA zone, which is where this is right now, which permits single-family homes, it permits a twenty-foot setback. Obviously, a twenty-foot setback here on Buckwood's site's not appropriate, so we increased by fifty percent, which is more or less similar to how, other developments. So, to answer your question, it's both looking at the, what could be built relative to setbacks and the context, as well as looking at other zones, at what they do, because what we can't do is create a situation where we're zoning it to, that's discriminatory to other developments how they were built.
I think the question, though, Chris, Chris, the question seems to be, why is it fifty on one side and thirty on the other, that?
So, the fifty, it was thirty at one point, so once we got the building condensed into a bigger footprint, we removed the street, we tried to get a, that connection to the open space, in fact, we're trying to get the open space around the site into Mansfield and South Fifth, where the, there's three lots that Borough owns. Um, so we felt that a fifty-foot setback was more appropriate, uh, and the owner of the property agreed to increase it by twenty feet. It was thirty feet, so we increased it twenty more feet to get fifty, which is, is a nice dimension for open space.
Why not on the other side?
Well, the concern was getting the, uh, connection to the south of the site through the open space, and it had always been on the southwestern corner, so we chose to keep it on the west side for that reason.
So, my, so.
My concern is, we know that there's probably racial discrimination happening, why there's no cut-through between Fifth and Seventh, we read that, I think we can believe that, and now I'm also worried that we get thirty feet on the seventh side and fifty feet on the fifth side, and that might be, we just might be keeping that racial stuff happening and, and just different people who have louder voices.
Right.
So, we should actually make sure that what we're doing now in two thousand and nineteen is as fair as it can be.
Yeah. Hey, Chris, um, I may be incorrect, but when Jim was talking to me, he mentioned, I, I asked him a similar question, and he mentioned that in order to get the depth, to reduce the height of the building, it had to be at a certain location. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, to a certain extent, that's why the building moved back and shifted over a little, because the grading is not one level line from high point to low point. It, I mean, it, it's a value in different direction.
So, is it to get the building lower, that's why it's thirty on one side and fifty on the other, or is it?
That's not the only reason, that's one of many reasons, um, but that is.
But that, but they, I, I think that's what we're both asking, you know, in, in terms.
Especially, could it be forty, forty?
It could be.
And, and still be as low as it is now?
I would have to take a look at the grading and make sure that works, but it's certainly possible.
Right, because I, I know that, you know, from the last meeting, they were very concerned about the height of the building, that neighbors on South Seventh did not want to feel like people were looking down into their backyards. So, they were instructed to get the building as low as possible so that there wouldn't be that kind of tower in the back. Um, and so when I spoke to Jim about, you know, cause, cause I also saw that same, I had the same question, and he explained to me, in order to get the, the building as low as possible so that it would be equal to what a building could be on South Seventh.
Mm-hmm, actually lower than that.
Okay, lower than what a building on South Seventh could be, it had to be placed that way. So, you know, that was the answer that I was given about it, and you may want to check that?
Yeah, it's based, more or less on that description, but the setbacks are, you know, round numbers, seventy-five, one-twenty-five, thirty, two-hundred and thirty, so a building could be situated in that area as is needed for grading purposes, but to answer your question, uh, we did make an attempt to lower the building, we did get it lower by six feet on, relative to that side.
I understand, so let's just look at the sides, because it could be fifty on Seventh and thirty on Fifth, or it could be forty, forty, or?
Could be.
Fifty, fifty on Buck.
Right.
Question for you, which side is it, is it fifty, and which side is it thirty? What? I don't, I don't.
No, seriously, come on. Right, I mean, this is what we're trying to fix, it's fifty on Fifth and thirty on Sixth.
Hi, I'm Marcia Goldberg, four fifty-one South Fifth. Um, I'm not going to talk about the, uh, new ordinance, I'm going to go back a little ways to, um, and repeat a question I asked a few, probably months ago, about the geotechnical engineer that the Borough has hired to, um, assess the impact of the tree removal on residents' property. Any updates on that?
Um, he did take a visit to the property with our code enforcement official, I want to say it was, whenever I emailed you about it, I'm sorry, I'm a little loose on the date, and I, I guess, you know what, I should, I haven't reached out to find out. My, I told him a, a big priority was to reach out to Freehold Soil, because they are responsible for enforcing the erosion and sediment plan that has been required of the property owner to put in place, and he was going to do that, and I have not heard, so let me reach out to him, and I'll have to get back to you.
What I'd like to know is, if there's any, um, if any study has been done that can give us a baseline, because there've already been some heavy rains, you know, one of the reasons that many of us, um, asked that the tree removal permit be, um, denied was that no provisions had been made to protect residents' property, um, such as, you know, a retaining wall or something like that. There's very steep slopes on the southern end, um, particularly behind mine and some of my neighbors' houses, and many trees were removed from those steep slopes, and I can see that change is happening, and yet, I won't be able to hold anybody accountable, because I don't have any data to show what was there. It's already three months, and I don't think we, anything has been, um, measured as, as I was told would happen, so I'd like to, I'd like to know if that's going to happen.
Yeah, let me, I'd like to have the benefit of a conversation with him, because he did go out there and spend some time.
Cause you told me he was going to contact me, and I.
No, they, they, they came out, I believe they actually walked, you may not have been home, but I think they went to the top of your property as well. I didn't have that in advance, um, cause I, I'd asked your permission if they could do that, and I believe they did.
Yeah.
So, let me loop back around with him, it, I did lose sight of it, I have to be honest, so I need to go back to him and, um, find out where we are and give you an update.
Okay, thank you.
Jim Lapidus, South Seventh Avenue. Uh, first, I just want to get some clarification on this drawing, if you don't mind. Um, I'm not sure I understand what this, the year represents, twenty, twenty feet. Can you, I don't start?
Sure. So, the twenty-foot dimension that you see in the front and behind the homes were more appropriately the permitted envelope, basically the space where you could build your house on your property. The twenty-foot is a setback dimension from property lines.
Where is the property line? So, the property line is here?
Yes, it's the vertical line, it's going up and down.
Yeah. And the other clarification I wanted was the height of the building. Is the fifty feet, hundred, ten feet, does that represent sea level? I don't really understand that.
Um, to an extent, yes, it's an assumed elevation, which is relative to sea, sea level.
So, this is, so, we're starting really fifty feet above sea level, which is point zero, and then the height is allowed to go up sixty feet?
Right, which was, is similar to what the ordinance had before, except now we're setting the building at a precise height vertically, like, it can't, you can't have a building forty-eight feet and on its podium level, that's flexible height, like, I think that was concerning you raised it last meeting, like, well, what is it, how tall can it be? So, we set it to sea-level height, which, um, this section cut shows, like, the South Seventh, you're, you're about eighty feet where your ground is, since your house is probably ninety-five, um, but it could be another fifteen, twenty feet taller, which is taller than that. So, we try to set it, which is actually specific, specifically responding to your questions, uh, we took that seriously and said we need to set it at height, and the developer said they can get the podium level to fifty feet, before it was like fifty-six feet, um, but only if we relocate the stormwater pipe that was going through the middle of the site.
Thank you. So, I just want to address a few things. Um, you know, in the past couple of months, I've been coming to a lot of these meetings, and, um, Mayor, you have come to my house and to talk about this as well, I thank you for that, reaching out. Um, there's been a lot of issues that people have brought up, um, and, you know, what I've heard tonight is, um, you know, I've heard about the height issue, but really, you know, it's hard to, for us to understand it, I, I see what you're saying with the, with the sea level, um, you know, and from what I read in the audience, um, cause the past one said forty-eight feet above, so, that's why, to me, it appears that this is even, it is no change. Um, but, that being, you know, I'll, I'll have to understand it a little bit better, if I, maybe I see a type of graphical map. Um, and this is the first time I heard about, um, the issue about people's cars, um, but I can understand where they're coming from. What I'm, what I'm trying to get at is that, um, we as a neighborhood want our input to count. So, my question is, like, has this plan already been decided? You know, um, you know, is there a way, how can we make a contribution, you know, that's where our voices are being heard in a concrete and meaningful manner? Has, you know, is this, like, set in stone, like, what we're looking at right now?
So, how would you answer the set in stone part of it?
Well, right now, this represents the final overlay ordinance for Buckwoods, as anticipated by the governing body. They introduce the ordinance, it'll go to the planning board, it'll be critiqued by the planning board, and you can certainly attend part of that critique.
I intend to.
This, this plan, it, it, the challenge was, you have to figure out how to fit seventy-five multifamily units on the property. We've been talking about this for years now, and some folks want to push it forward, some folks want to push it back, some folks want to spread it out, some folks don't want to spread it out. We've been meeting with the special master, who is a plan- We've been meeting with the special master, who is a planner himself, he was appointed by the court, and he has been overseeing, I guess you would call it, our discussions and our negotiations about how this would work. So, it's not set in stone, it could always change, the ordinance could be amended even after it's adopted. But, but we're at a point now where we have to suggest to the council that they actually adopt an ordinance, and this is the ordinance that we're recommending, the staff, so that we can present that to the court and be compliant on July fifteenth with all the pieces to the puzzle we need to be compliant with in order to get our current affordable housing plan approved, and to avoid builder-remedy lawsuits for the next five years. Okay? So that's where we are. So I don't want to mislead you that you can come into the planning board and all of a sudden, you know, we've got townhouses spread all over the place and so on. That's not the plan right now, it's not the plan that the current special master has been reviewing and encouraging us to pursue, and it's not the plan that we've negotiated with the owner. This is the plan.
You know, 'cause the height of the buildings was just one piece of a puzzle that, you know, we have been, you know, working with. We talked about the buffer zone, we talked, again, about the height of the buildings, and I'm still, I, I still see it, you know, as very lo, you know, high above the houses. We talked about, you know, how the fact that there's other ways to approach the building, whether, whether you could have a street go all the way through it. You know, it seems like a lot of effort was made in this current, in this current variation of putting the park, all the parking underneath, that's, you know, drastically changed this, the plan, and it seems larger now. It seems, if anything, worse in terms of the, the massive quality of this building. It seemed, you know, if you're looking at the picture, it seems almost like fortress-like, the four stories, and then, you know, it's just, it's big. And, you know, we had concerns about quality of life, you know, the density, at the, it's the end of a one-way street, I mean, I'm sorry, it's the end, it's a dead end, really. So, you know, there's a lot of other issues that, you know, we would like to see addressed as well. I'm just hoping that we can make a contribution.
I, I, I concur with your, your vision of looking at that and seeing a massive building. I'm hoping, beyond hope, that when this goes to the planning board, there's going to be real drawings and definitions that will hopefully create an image that is not a big block plopped down in the middle of the property. I, you know, I know we don't have the luxury of having anything beyond the big block presented to us tonight. So I, when I'm, while I want to see this come to an end, I also urge you to go and, and talk at the planning board. They're, they're, they are the people that are going to be going through all the details of, first of all, there's an environmental, a representative from the Environmental Commission on the board. He's going to be looking at it from an environmental perspective. There, there are, you're, you're, I'm sure someone on the planning board is going to ask for a traffic study, a emergency vehicle study. All of these things are probably going to happen at the planning board, and they are the ones that are going to come back to us with their recommendation on the plan.
You know, there's a lot of the issues that we are concerned with, you know, could seem, it seems that they could be rectified by utilizing the entire lot instead of just one portion of it, you know. You know, that's why I just want to put the open space issue in perspective. I am, if you look at Highland Park, immediately south of the Buckwoods is a borough land, which I assume is going to remain open space. Immediately south of that is the Meadows, which is an eighteen-acre nature area, urban renewal, ancient nature area, which they call it. The, the, in the proposal, the open space is just a two-hundred-foot parcel, equivalent to four houses in length. So it's really, I mean, can we not use the term of open space? It's really just a vacant lot. It also is the lowest point in Buckwoods. So, I mean, can you explain why this vacant lot is needed? I mean, when there's already adequate open space in the area, and we could utilize that space to make a building which is, you know, improves the quality of life for the people around that neighborhood?
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, again, it, it's been a part of the debate for years about whether or not it moves back, it moves forward, the area in the rear, the two-hundred feet which you're describing, and the slopes next to those, that area, are the slopes that are regulated by our slopes ordinance. So there was concern, for example, by a, a recent speaker, about what's the impact going to be if somebody builds behind my house with these very steep slopes. We're going to make sure that the steep slopes ordinance, the two-hundred, that area, the two-hundred feet, is going to be followed, and that's going to be stable, and nothing's going to fall into it, it's going to be done correctly. If we move the building back, then we've heard from folks who live back there to say, we don't want it back there, we want it moved forward, it should be closer to Sixth Avenue. So, I, I mean, do we put the walking trail on one side, do we put it on the other? I mean, if you put it on one side, somebody else is unhappy. There's, there's just no way to accomplish everything that everybody wants and still have seventy-five units of multifamily housing on the property. I mean, that's really the honest answer. And we've tried, and we've listened, and this council has listened for a number of years, and spent a ton of money on design, and we've been able to build that design. This ordinance has more regulations on the design elements of this property. I mean, the pictures, the Photoshop pictures there require gable roofs. It's not going to look, it's not going to be a flat roof like you see with the other multifamilies leading down the street. It's going to be something that looks more like a townhouse or a regular house. So it was those design efforts that Chris and his group lobbied hard to sell the builder on, to make sure that they would do it in a way that fit in. And I, I respect your opinion that maybe we didn't do it right, but it, we, we certainly tried. I guess that's what we're saying, we certainly tried. And if you have some other, I'd, design ideas or suggestions about pushing it back or spreading it out, fine, take that to the planning board, and they might agree with you, and come back and persuade the governing body to do something different. But honestly, that's what we've done the last two years, but meet with the court master and try to work out something which we could control. And, and I think Chris has done a good job designing that.
Thank you, Councilor, I'm not going to take up more time, just want to, you know, I agree with what you said, you can't make everybody happy. I think what the point I'm trying to make is that we want to at least, the, make it equitable. Some people are really happy, some people are really miserable with this plan. So it just has to be equal forever.
Nobody's happy. Nobody's happy.
Shall we sell North Fourth Avenue? Came up a second time, because the first time I didn't realize I could stay and ask a follow-up question.
Okay.
Just learning the routine here. Thank you, Matt Hale, for offering numbers of times to talk to me about Buckwoods. It was really important to me. Life happens, so I appreciate it. I wanted to go back to the drainage issue and the, the concern about flooding, about, and now I've heard about erosion, et cetera. I'm hearing, from what you're saying, that we can go to the planning board and ask them questions, so that it doesn't have to be here necessarily with the people who are trying to give us an overview. Is there a way on the website right now to find out whom to speak to for certain questions and if they've been addressed during this whole process? I have not been a part of the whole process, so I feel, in a way, like, I, I have a right to do this, but I also have an understanding that people have worked hard. So is there a listing of people that we can go to, on the website at least, to know whom to talk to about a particular issue we're concerned about?
Sure. So, I'm not sure I'm understanding...
Well, you have a committee, right? You have a board?
Planning board.
A planning board, with people on it.
Right.
Different people have different responsibilities, I'm assuming.
No.
How does that work, then, please?
Not really supposed to, I don't think, go talk to the individual members of the board.
The planning board isn't available in that same...
But I would suggest, if you're trying to get a better, just for this particular instance, there might, might be a better, more macro way to address that moving forward, if you personally feel like you need to catch up and get a better handle on what's been going on, when I've made myself available to other residents, I'd be more than happy to kind of brief you and then try to point you in the right direction as to where to get some of those answers.
Okay, so let's go back, then, to the drainage environmental question. If something happened...
Council President George wanted to address your question, too.
Just, and I'd ask Chris or Ed to confirm, although Ed's not the planning board attorney. Ordinarily, at planning board meetings, the borough's engineer is present, and I believe that Chris's, uh, planner's firm will have more detailed information regarding some of those questions. But it's normal to have the experts that the borough uses at these application hearings, and I'm not sure whether there'll be other representatives as well. But the, you're talking about, are there areas of expertise that I could ask a, a more specific question about? They're generally present at all the planning board meetings.
So we cannot get ahold of them ahead of time to ask those questions?
No, no, but you can raise those questions, you can raise those questions and direct them to them at the planning board hearing.
Or, or if you have specific questions along those lines, the borough administrator can help you get the answers.
Okay, so the next meeting, repeat, please, the next meeting, when an engineer will be there?
Thursday.
This coming Thursday?
Yes.
At the planning board.
Here in the Spurrow Hall?
Yes.
Yes, right here.
Okay, so I'll address the questions I have there, then.
Seven-thirty. Seven-thirty P.M.
Hi, Abby, I live on Harper Street. So I appreciate that you've made some revisions, and this is, I don't know, the third overlay, and you're trying to address concerns that people have brought up. What I'm wondering is, I've been to a lot of these meetings, and it's been brought up many times to have a road connecting the two sides of Buckwoods, you know, South Fifth, South Seventh, and I haven't seen that addressed in any of these iterations, and I'm wondering why not.
So, so I'll jump in for everybody. So right now, to, the, the only place we can put a road, and we've talked about this internally, nothing is set in stone, is where there currently is a, a path, sort of a paper street that was supposed to have been paved at one point down by the Public Works Building that would connect the streets in some way. However, the, the, the plan that somebody, I, I think it was Dan actually said, why can't we just run from Graham across? And the problem is that there are houses there already, so, you know, you can't run some, through somebody's property. So, so that's why we're looking at the possibility of creating a road behind the property. It's the best way I could describe it.
You are looking at the, a possibility of creating a road as part of this overlay?
One of the issues is, the property, the, there's borough property further toward, I'll say, the river, because I'm not sure, I'm getting my north and souths confused, behind this property, where there may be some opportunities to run some connections, but there isn't an obvious way, without running into the issue of people's homes being where the road would be, to connect it on this property. And so we can, I don't see how we would impose that on this development, but that's not to say we couldn't take a higher look at it, and are there opportunities on the borough property adjacent? Dust off some of those older plans, which, that was the first I'd ever heard, that cars used to, it was a dirt road, but cars used to cut through, when, like, somebody presented testimony at a previous meeting. I was not aware of that, I didn't have the history. So I don't see why we couldn't look at it. There may be legitimate reasons why engineering or otherwise, there was a reason they didn't do it, I don't know, but I don't think we can impose that on this property owner, I mean, as part of this application.
And, and just to be clear, if it's borough property that we're talking about, we don't have to hitch it on to this right now for this approval, that has to get done by X time.
Right.
So that, that is the first...
So what would be the plan for looking into that?
Well, that's the fir, the first time we heard about it was a couple of weeks ago, so, you know, clearly it's on, it's on our minds. So, you know, there have been reasons why we haven't done that, and now we can look at other reasons and, and see what might be best for everybody.
And I did spend, after that meeting, I did spend some time with Chris, looking at Google Views and trying to get a handle. So it is on our radar, and we have to look at that. I mean, all of this is a ways away from an application for development, given the environmental stuff and all the other stuff on the property. So we have a little time to take it into consideration.
Thank you.
I made a comment to Terry, which I guess we should share with all. That was a comment that we did look into seriously, and we felt that it was something we should bring into the master plan reexamination report, because with all those, with the reexamination report, we need to look at each element to a certain degree, and circulation obviously is one of them. And we felt that that was a good time to look at it at macro scale.
But that's a, that's a great opportunity to bring that up in the upcoming, uh, planning process.
I have a question as it pertains, I'm going to go back now. I just saw on number twenty-six to, twenty-seven tonight, that we're looking at the, the master plan reexamination, so that would be a part of that consideration?
Sure. That's what Chris was referring to, yes.
Oh.
So, good to hear that that is a reconsideration, because I know that was an issue that was brought up in the nineties, that there were a number of residents that had petitioned for what is now a bike path to actually be a street. And, you know, while I do understand that many of you were not on the Borough Council and certainly not the mayor back then, it is prudent to recognize, well, I don't know, I don't know how old anyone is, I'm not making any guesses here.
Stephanie wasn't born yet.
But, um...
I was in high school.
I, I say that to say that it's good to hear that that is being looked at, and that, that is being taken under consideration. My concern, again, with the development that has been proposed, is that it is so specific, that you have gone through all of these great lengths and expenses to dictate what the design and look of this building is, when, from what I understand, some of the early, early plans that this developer put forth was a much more equitable use of this space. And I understand that no one is going to be a hundred percent happy, none of us are going to walk away with this a hundred percent happy, because I think for a lot of people, they would prefer to have had that area just be undeveloped. But since there's going to be something there, it should affect everyone equally, and I think that is the best way to approach this, so that you don't have winners and losers, so that you don't have a bunch of people who are super, super angry that their home and privacy is being impending upon, infringed upon because of this building. And if it was a much more equitable distribution of space, everyone wouldn't be a hundred percent happy, but everybody wouldn't be a hundred percent upset either, because they would feel that it was evenly spread out, and no one would feel like they got the short end of the stick. So that's number one. The other issue, again, with the way that this is designed, and with how specific this ordinance is, is that you leave no room for the creativity for the developer. None of you are developers, none of you are architects or planners. So I don't understand why the borough is taking on that responsibility and shouldering that responsibility. I get that you have to work with this organization, and you have to negotiate with them, but why does it have to be so specific? Why can't it leave some leeway so that there could be opportunities, for example, instead of one giant rectangular block, something that has a pathway and roads through the middle, so that if you do connect, and I believe the street would be Donaldson Street that would connect to Valentine, that wouldn't go through anyone's house?
Right.
That you could actually extend South Sixth, so that South Sixth could connect to that, too, and so that South Sixth wouldn't continue to be cut off. I just say that the way that you guys are handling this, it is so restrictive and so tight, that it doesn't leave room for, for to breathe, it doesn't leave room for creativity, it doesn't leave room for innovation, and I really think that you should rethink that before July second.
So, just so I'm clear, you're, you're asking us to leave the design plans in the hands of the developer? Is that, I, I just want to be clear of what you're asking for.
Yes, I'm asking that the borough make restrictions on setbacks, the borough make restrictions on height, the borough make restrictions on, when, when someone is building an addition on their house, and they go and apply for a permit to do so, they are, they present that permit, and the planning department, they go and they look at... present that permit, and the planning department, they go and they look at the structure, and if it's structurally sound, if it meets setback requirements or enough requirements in the back, but they don't decide what it's gonna look like. They don't make decisions on, you know, your dormers and the, you know, architectural style that it has to be in. I know that for a fact, there's a giant house on Aurora and South Eleventh that the borough thought it was okay for them to build all the way up to the back of the property line. And, I mean, that happens in this town all the time. I'm just asking why it has to be so specific.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear that you're suggesting that we leave all of the design elements of this to Jack Morris?
I'm asking why it's so specific.
Okay.
Okay.
We, we made it specific so that it would look decent and fit in to the neighborhood. You may disagree with that, but if we left it up to a developer to put seventy-five units in there, there are two apartment buildings right down the street, and you would have ended up with a flat roof and a whole bunch of windows looking over everybody's property.
Is that what he?
If that's what we did, and we didn't do that, we took the time, the council spent the money with Chris and the planning firm to negotiate something that we thought, and again, I respect if you disagree with that, but we thought with gable roofs, with breaking up the facade down the side, with not allowing any balconies on the, on the Seventh Avenue side, because we didn't want people hanging stuff out or hanging on the balconies and disturbing people on the Seventh side. A lot of thought and effort went into every element of this ordinance in order to lock down this developer with whom we have a history, and to make sure that we knew what we were gonna get, and that it was gonna be something that was good and decent for the borough. We could have just left it up to the developer, that would have been easy. We could have, Chris could have done up three pages worth of bulk regulations, and I can guarantee you, in four years from now, when that building was built, you would be back to crucify everybody sitting up here if we left it up to the developer. So that's why we did that intentionally, and the borough spent a lot of money and time to get Chris to do that, and that's why it was done.
Okay, well, I'm glad the borough would like to take responsibility for deciding what's good and decent for everyone, without asking for anyone else's input or taking anyone else's input seriously.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we have some quiet here? Somebody's speaking at the microphone.
Okay, so the size of this building.
Oh, wait, give your name and address first.
Marion Sakwood, South Fifth Avenue. Okay, now I don't see a breakdown about the, of the size of the units. How many efficiencies, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms? The size of the units will determine the amount of square footage that this thing is gonna take up. If you have seventy-five smaller units, it certainly would take up less space than seventy-five three bedrooms. Now, I don't know what, I don't see in there a breakdown of how many of each type of unit have.
The only regulation that a town has is over the size of the affordable units. We can't regulate the size of the market rate units. So eighty-five or eighty percent of these are gonna be market rate units. So there has to be a fair mixture, probably two and three bedroom, one bedroom, I don't believe there are any studios. But we can regulate and require minimum sizes for our very low, low and moderate income, as I think you know. But we can't do that for the market rate units.
Oh, okay, so that can't be part of.
No.
Okay, I also didn't see the number of parking spaces in the plan.
They're all underneath the building.
Right, right, but it didn't say the number of parking spaces.
Chris?
I mean, the bigger the units, the more parking spaces you might need.
There, there are, is it called R.I.S.?
Sorry, I was gonna look for these.
There are, there are regulations. RSI. There are regulations that guide us in terms of how many parking spaces per bedroom, I think it is.
Yes, so I was just looking for this exercise, she could see, find it clearly, but there is a provision like in all residential developments in New Jersey, it's based on residential site improvement standards, which is RSIS. And it's basically, yes, K, number three, thank you. So it's based on residential site improvement standards, it's a state regulation on residential properties, and parking is based on the number of bedrooms in a unit. So just for, real quick.
So more bedrooms and the more parking spaces you leave?
Correct, and since we can't limit the market rate units whatsoever, by law, we're pretty much stuck with RSIS, but it's around one hundred and fifty spaces.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so sort of the footprint is, I, it's hard for me to picture that the footprint is locked in, whereas the size of the units is not locked in.
Could you speak from the microphone, just so that camera can pick you up?
Sure. Okay, it just doesn't make, I have a little trouble with the concept that the size of the footprint is locked in, but the size of the units is not.
Because it's illegal for us to determine what the market rate sizes would be.
Okay, thank you.
There's a law.
Thank you. State your name and address, please.
I've forgotten it by now. Loeslebing North Second Avenue. Okay, yes, this is quite a different ordinance from the one a couple of weeks ago, not a slight difference. You've gone from an exclusive gated community, in my opinion, to a fortress that is not a neighborhood. But, okay, you've got Graham Street on the borough tax map on paper, but you can't attach, hook it right into his lot number seventy-five. Doesn't sound right to me. Now, you might do yourself a favor by, this is MF, I guess for multifamily, and AH for affordable housing? You might do yourself a favor and tell people, or maybe change the AH. I was asked at the candidate's night, why does only the South Side have affordable housing? I said Montgomery Apartments housing, the Castle housing, but you're not telling people that, and then when you have a name that says affordable housing, it sounds even more affordable than, than these other two that are the senior people, the apartments. Anyhow, you've gotta think this through better. Numbers, letter C, temporary sales and construction trailers, make sure, please, that those are accessible. Used to have staircases, now if they're out there, they must be accessible. One family, okay, so, but now we know it's one hundred and ten feet tall. I see affordable housing, the percentages. Where else in Highland Park is there a project where it's rental or sales? Rental or sales? Will it be, will it be a mix, or will it be, what the developer or the court decides, only rental units, only sales?
It's up to the developer to decide whether or not they wanna build it as a rental unit or as a for-sale unit.
And I think that both American Properties and Polty on Cleveland Avenue have a mix of townhouses and apartments.
Okay, so this isn't special for this dealer, this developer. Okay, in reading this very quickly today, this latest draft, where are the mandatory, because this is under Fair Housing Act, where are the fully accessible, I think there have to be five or six units? They have to be in here.
You mean the percentage of affordable?
No, not affordable, accessible, fully accessible.
You have to build a certain number of them as accessible under the Fair Housing Act, so we don't have to tell them where to put the bars or anything else, you have to have a certain number of accessible units.
Okay, so there's nothing, though, mentioned in here, then you're sure that's gonna occur?
Yes.
Okay. I like all these promises. Okay, so, so we've got a fortress. I wanna know, so one hundred and ten feet for the one building, what is the height, the opening of the podium parking, the garages, I'm gonna say, when they pull in? Just what is the height of a garage door?
Just so I'm clear, so you're asking for the height relative to sea level where the podium parking level is?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can a wheelchair van enter? What is the height?
Well, you access, you access the garage through a speed ramp, go into the site, and the whole space is to be accessible, and then you'll take an elevator to your hallway.
What's the height for the vehicle? What's the highest vehicle can fit in?
Oh, you're talking about the minimum clearance?
Step, like this.
Yeah, so I think, believe the minimum clearance is eight feet, two inches for like a van, but the garage is more, more than likely gonna be about ten feet tall, and there's gonna be two feet of steel structure to support the building.
Okay, good.
That doesn't need to be mentioned in the plan, it has to be built through building code.
Right, because it's not being done in East Brunswick, Edison, and New Brunswick, Robert Wood Johnson has a huge violation on Route Twenty-Seven at Joyce Kilmer, but that's not here or there. Okay, when you reduce the, and you lower the building, you reduce the South Sixth Avenue old storm drain. That's forty-eight inches is what it was twenty years ago. Are you replacing it with a twenty-inch storm drain?
So the only provision we put in the ordinance, it must be relocated, and the sizing, I think will determine it with the borough engineer at site plan level. So it needs to be appropriate and handle to capacity.
Twenty years ago, it was going down to eighteen or twenty inches. Where is the retention pond? On site? Not shown, or none?
Not shown.
Not shown, so there might be one. Okay, celebrations, you know, graduations, what have you. Where's the visitor parking? And garage sale parking? I mean, it's a fortress. Okay, good. Will the building be fully sprinkled top to bottom, including parking?
So I'm not licensed architect, but I did speak to the builder and architects in my firm, and what we agreed with the builder was that, the developer rather, and property owner was that this would be a NFPA rated thirteen. Now, what that means is that it's gonna have sprinklers, but not just sprinklers pointing down, which is thirteen R, but also pointing up into the cavities. So you don't have the situation what happened in Edgewater, where the fire took over the whole building. So they agreed to go to the highest level of, you know, being sprinkled, and that's whole, the whole part of discussion with the, trying to address concerns from the fire department and the neighboring property owner. So to me, a highly rated beyond than what's required.
Good, that should be in here. Again, I hope that somebody considers attaching Graham Street. This afternoon, South Seventh has Graham going Seventh to Crowell's, but it, it's right at the edge of Lot Seventy-Five, which is this property. There's no reason, it looked level to me, it wasn't a fifteen or twenty-foot drop or elevation. What's beyond it, I don't know, because I didn't wanna trespass. And as far as the old Y property, the Highland Cliffs, I think those two affordable units, the final resolution that I have, are one and two bedrooms are affordable. However, the entire complex are only two and three bedroom. So the Fair Housing Act asks for fairness. So if you have two and three bedroom units for fair market, two and three bedroom, even if it's one of each, have to be for affordable. You don't throw in a one bedroom. That's a violation. Thank you.
Hayden Shung, South Fifth Avenue. I have several questions. So about parking again, I think the previous speaker asked the same question, but I'm sure I got an answer. Like, where do the visitor of these seventy-five units gonna park?
So the residential site improvement standards anticipates handling guest parking, but from a practical standpoint, what we tried to work with the builder and developer, property owner, was that we did not wanna get the guests into the garage, because that would more, more than likely be secure without looking like it's a gated community. So we located guest parking in the little motor court area.
So there are like five of them?
There's just five shown there, just because of the size of the motor court, but the idea is to provide some lane parking without having to force people into the garage, because once you get in there and can't find parking, it's difficult. But that's one of the benefit of creating the parking underneath the building, there's circulation in and out of the building, so you could get in and out, as opposed to the previous plan. But there are about five or, five spaces in the motor court for guest parking. But there will be more built into the ordinance that's underneath the building, this is sort of five extra spaces.
So let me understand this correctly, out of the seventy-five units, there would be like, at least like, what, one hundred and fifty people? That there are like five parking spaces for their guests? Is that correct?
Of the one hundred and fifty spaces, some are for guests. How to quantify that to a precise number, it's difficult to do that, but the one hundred and fifty anticipates some guests, but we felt that there should be some specifically located outside the garage to avoid circulation conflicts.
But the way I understand it is that the guests are not able to get into the garage, correct?
I, it's hard to answer that question, since we're not really designing the building, but the idea is that it would be secure. I assume the developer would wanna control it to a certain extent, but it's difficult for me to comment on that.
So, so Chris, can you just explain that, you know, that this is not a design of
a building, this is a concept that needs to go to the courts, right, for us to get approval? It is not the final design of the building. I think people need to understand that.
Yeah, correct. It's not the final design, although there are rigid standards of how a building should look like in corners, but the actual design of the building is not fixed, and it really can't be fixed, but we, like Mr. Schmier was talking about, we try to set a standard that building looks good from the outside, because we could end up with a very, very flat building, so. So I don't wanna say it's not designed, but it looks like it is designed, but from a practical standpoint, it is not designed to be approved at this moment, it's just an ordinance to regulate the design of the building.
Right. Okay, the second question I have is that, I was just walked down the entire length of the Buckwood property, pretty much all the trees in the middle has been cut. So the only tree remaining are the ones on the buffer zone, basically. So my question is, during the development of this building, are the trees in the thirty feet offset, fifty feet offset, are those trees will be cut and be replanted, or those trees will be remained?
So you're referring to the buffers on the sides of the building?
I'm referring to the, the trees in the middle have all been cut, the only tree remaining are on the side.
Yes, it's just some trees there, and, and all likelihood, there'll be some more tree removal to fit the footprint, but in its replacement, there will be replacement trees. And I think, to a certain extent, we could work with neighboring property owners and the builder to figure out where replacement trees should be along the buffers. I know there's been concern about that, but the idea is to get most of the replacement trees in the open space area, and then we'll work with the, during the site plan process, for how to locate new trees and try to preserve some to a certain extent along the borders, as you're referring to. So there'll be some existing trees remaining, but more than likely to be more replacements, especially on a thirty-foot side.
So the last question I have is regarding the, the fair housing. So I'm not even sure how to phrase this question. Basically, so I've also read through this third round housing element and fair, fair share plan. So to understand from our borough attorney here, is that the purpose of July fifteen is that we're gonna get our fair housing plan approved?
Correct, it's called a compliance hearing, and if the judge agrees with that settlement agreement and our plan, we would get a compliance approval.
So is this the, the fair housing plan that you're trying to get a judge to approve?
Yes, well, I don't know which one you have in your hand, but it's the most recent.
This the third round housing element and fair share plan that I downloaded from the borough?
I think you have the right one, yes.
Okay, so, but according to this document, as, as explained earlier by Kalidra, was that the Buckwood and the Gateway project are not even part of this plan. So I'm kinda befuddled here, so like, how is it that we spend all this time, you know, the, the fixed seventy-five units of Buckwood, this zoning overlay that is supposed to be part of this?
Settlement.
The settlement, and it's not even part of this plan?
Well, because it's required to be done as a part of the settlement we reached with the Fair Share Housing Center, they wanted us to address prospectively what has to be done in the next round. And we clearly believe that there'll be a next round, and there'll be additional units that have to be built. So if we have fifteen or twenty or so that would come out of this project, those would be placed towards a future obligation. But the direct answer to your question is, the Fair Share Housing Center would not settle with us over our plan unless we anticipated what would happen on Buckwoods. It's one of the few remaining developable pieces of land in the borough. So Fair Share grabbed that and said, we want you to be committed to do something in the future on this. So Fair Share grabbed that and said, we want you to be committed to do something in the future on this piece of property. And since we had been discussing, and not successfully because we hadn't agreed to anything, 144 units with the owner of this property, when they brokered the deal, so to speak, at 75, I believe we felt it was a fair agreement.
So this is the, what you anticipate in the future? The future need, the fair housing need for the future?
Yes.
Because there were several rounds where, I think you were talking about 2020.
2025 to 2035, there'll be the fourth round.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just one quick question. How can we, you said you spoke to the school board about the number of students. Now, how can we estimate the number of students coming out of this development if we don't know the size of the units?
Well, we, we know the number of units that would go in there. There is a Rutgers study that most planning boards will follow and that will tell us how many. We'll find out at the planning board, the size of the units. We don't design those, but we'll ask the question. You can ask the question Thursday night. What are the size of the various units? How many bedrooms? We can count them up. But when we talked about this almost several years ago, about the capacity of the school to absorb additional kids from the Buckwoods development, we were assured that we would have room in our school system.
That's probably before some of these other developments came on board.
Well, it, it probably was. But I think each time, like American Properties, which they're building, and the Pulte Development, which has been built, I assume that's been taken into consideration. But the bottom line is, you got to find room for the kids. You can't deny a development application, whether it's an affordable housing or a regular housing, because you don't want any more damn kids coming into your town. It's illegal, you can't do that. So we got to figure out a way to accommodate the kids, and we will.
Right, no, it worries me that, it's sort of like we're having this burst of development now. So what we might see is suddenly a spike of children. And then in a few years, those children will have been gone because so many new units are coming on at the same time.
So several years ago, Rutgers graduate students did a study of, I'm, I'm getting a little tired, so I'm trying to remember the name of the study, but, ah, thank you. The capital improvement study. And what they did was, they, they met with the, every department in the municipality and said, okay, if we get X number of more population, are you going to need more garbage trucks or, you know, fire engines? And, and they did talk to the schools as well. And so they, they broke out the number of possible new residents and then, of course, possible new children. And do you have the right number of classrooms for this and that sort of thing? So the study has, has taken into account growth in the municipality and how it would impact all of our services, including the schools.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Herb Gross. Counselor, my, I'm going to direct my question to you, sir. Just recently, over on Second Avenue, and I think you're probably well, well familiar with what I'm going to say, I had a chance to talk with the owner of the property. And they're building, right on Second Avenue, across the street from where the Sunoco gas station is, they're building about two affordable housing units upstairs and two affordable units for veterans. And I would like to know from you, sir, what is your position concerning these homes that are being built right, right here in Highland Park? I told the owner, I had a chance to speak with them, and I told him, I'm very interested in getting an affordable unit. I told him I'm a veteran and he said there's going to be approximately two units for, for the veterans. So I told him, I said, well, I'll be in touch with the counselor from Highland Park. And tonight, I'm asking you, counselor, what is the position in Highland Park concerning these units right there on Second Avenue?
Well, Herb, the, there is a law in New Jersey that gives a preference for affordable housing to veterans. It starts off with disabled veterans. I'm sorry, it starts off with homeless veterans. And then it goes to disabled veterans. And then it goes to families taking care of disabled veterans. But they're still veterans. So my advice to you is, and I think the position of the council is, it's wonderful that there are two units being built that could have veterans. And if I were you, I would go talk to that person again and get on the list to qualify to get in, if you want to get into one of those units. They have to hire an administrative agent to market those units and they can give a preference to you perhaps, or other veterans in order to go high on the list to get in there.
Well, concerning that he's building these units right there on Raritan Avenue, doesn't he have to come to you as counselor in Highland Park to inform you what he's doing?
Presumably has. He either got a building permit or he got permission from the land use board. But the bottom line is that if he has affordable units, he has to hire a company to market those units, okay? To the region. But people who are veterans within the region can go to the top of the list. So he will or she will be working with somebody to fill those units. And if I were you, if you're interested in one of those units, I would tell them, who is marketing your affordable housing units? I'm a veteran, I'd like to be considered.
Well, I, I told him that I'm a veteran and I would like to get one of these units.
But you got to get to his administrative agent. That's the person who is going to be responsible for filling those units for this owner. So go back to him respectfully and say to him, who is your administrative agent I can talk to to get on the list?
But he does not have to come to you as counselor in Highland Park?
No.
To inform you what he's doing?
Nope. He's just got to follow the law.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
And this will be executive session to discuss personnel. May I have a motion to then go into the conference agenda? Conference meeting.
So move.
This meeting is adjourned.